I'll open the meeting. This is the work session for July 23rd. And I'll read the announcement up front.
Me? Okay.
Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th. Excuse me? Oh, okay. He must have been talking to the licensed place. Okay. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GL Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Topsfield Board of Selectmen, or the Select Board, will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the Topsfield website at www.topsfield-ma.gov. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch or listen to the meeting may do so in the following manner. Video conference, see log on information below, that was on the agenda. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the Topsfield website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. So for announcements, the meeting is being recorded by the recording clerk for record keeping. And Selectman Gant is also going to record the meeting. So our first topic of business would be the minutes. So a motion to-
A motion to approve the minutes of the Select Board meeting of June 15th, 2020.
Is there a second? Okay. Any discussion? No? Okay, then let's have a roll call vote. Dick?
Aye.
Boyd?
Aye.
And Lynn, aye. I think Marshall will be coming back later, and he would abstain anyway because he was not on the board at this time. Do I have a motion?
To approve the minutes of the Board of Selectmen work session that was with the FinCom on June 18th, 2020.
Check it.
Any discussion? Hearing none. I'll go for a roll call vote. Dick?
Aye.
Boyd? And Lynn, aye. Casts unanimously again. All right. The next item on the agenda is Complete Streets. As we have a vote coming up on Monday, I understand Kevin, you'd like to give us an overview of the project.
Absolutely. Thank you, Vice Chair. What I wanted, what I hope to do today is just walk everyone through a little bit about the project and the specific item that will require the Select Board's vote on Monday involves configuration and access where Washington Street meets Grove. I'm going to share my screen with everybody because there's some really good information there, and this is the technical difficulty. So hopefully this works smoothly for everybody. I'm going to give it a try here.
Hey, I get to read your password while you're doing it.
Yeah. Exactly. I've got special privileges too, so you guys can really-
I didn't record it though, so.
Dick did though.
Yeah.
Have to modify that section maybe. All right, here we go. So. Here's the first one I want to share with everybody. So this up here is the image of the scope of the work for the Complete Street project, which incorporates part of Washington Street and Grove Street. The project is a sidewalk restoration project where for the section that you see on the upper part of that map that's in red will be a-
Does everyone see? I don't-
No, we got a, Kevin, we got a blank screen.
I got a blank screen.
Okay. My apologies, everyone. Let me give it a try back. Is it still blank?
Still blank. It says it's recording up in the upper left-hand corner, but it's still blank.
We did test it earlier today to make sure this would work, so I'm disappointed. My apologies, everyone. Well, let me, I'll explain. So from Main Street on Grove to just before the split at Grove Street where it comes up to Washington Street, there's an existing asphalt sidewalk in that lane. And this Complete Street grant received will be replacing that like-for-like, so that'll be coming up and squared off. As that, you make that turn where Grove meets Washington Street and it turns towards Town Hall, that access there is going to be seeing a, an extension of the sidewalk. Right now currently, it's just road, so we have sidewalk that leads to basically a dead end. And then when you get to Washington Street, there's a sidewalk that picks up again as you head towards the road. But there's a gap that's, there is no sidewalk. So as part of the Complete Street package, part of this, the requirement was to create a sidewalk in this area. And so by doing so, we're going to actually have to go about seven feet into the roadway to accommodate the space needed for that sidewalk. As a result, it pinches the road and that coupled with the fact that we're looking at this from a safety standpoint, we had some conversations last week or so around doing something a little bit different.
Yeah, Kevin, Kevin, excuse, excuse me just for a minute. There's some background noise that makes it very difficult to follow. I would suggest that everybody that's not wanting to say something mute so we can save that background noise.
Yeah, that's fine. No?
I think that's, I think that's me, Boyd, because I'm in the truck checking town, so I'll do that right now.
It worked.
All right.
Now we can hear you.
Right. So that section at Grove and Washington, as you're heading and turning towards Town Hall, that area will have a new sidewalk that will be installed. It will come into the roadway to do so. It will be protected with a granite curbing in that section. As a result, the road narrows and with the road narrowing, that coupled with a broader look at safety in that section of how we can better flow traffic. The question that will come up on Monday for the Board will be changing this into one-way in and then on the other side of the ledge, the rock, one-way. I'm sorry, that one, the other side would be one-way out. So it would be instead of two-way traffic on both of those points where Washington meets Grove Street, the, the, the part of the road, if you're coming up Grove Street and heading toward Washington, that would be a one-way out. And then the one-way in would be the one south of that, which would be close to where that crosswalk is across from Chief or Gary. That's what road, I'm sorry, what road is that directly across? I can't see it on my map.
That is Col Rain.
Thank you, thank you guys. Appreciate it. So be, that would be the one-way in. I don't know, Gary, did I, did you want to comment at all? Is there anything I might have missed in that overview?
No, I think it was pretty good. I think, so if you're looking at, if anybody does have that map or not, if you're coming up Grove Street from Maine, the east side would be the right-hand swing around what is, I know is Shogaloff, the rock there, going towards Washington. The west side would be the other way. So that would now coming into town towards Maine would be one-way in from Washington. You'd have to go to the east side or to the right of the rock to get onto Washington, whether it be going left or right, to accommodate what we're trying to do here.
Question I-
Sorry.
I'm sorry. Question I've got is if you're coming down Grove Street from Maine and as Grove Street bends toward Town Hall, that's going to be one-way.
That is correct.
What, what kind of corner is that going to make for the people that come up that Grove Street that want to turn left on a Washington Street? Is that a reasonable corner?
It's actually, that is the line of sight where the motorist's coming out to the lower side of the below that island here. Exit on the right side is a better line of sight all the way down to Glenn Road, where we have some real obstruction. If we kept it in the same pathway, it's two-way on the other side. Puts the cars probably about 10 feet beyond the top line to get out into the traffic to actually get a clear line of sight. But actually from a public safety perspective, it, it really enhances public safety by doing it this way.
To a better deal.
Again, Gary, do you mind if you could mute again? It's, it's hard to hear. Thank you. So the line of sight then, Chief, you're saying, I'm going left or right?
It's, it makes a lot of sense to make it one-way from Maine to Grove, going out to Washington to the right side of the island. Because the line of sight is far superior than if we were to have them exiting to the left of the island. Because it puts you to really get out to see the line of sight from traffic coming in from the Oxford area, going past Glenn, coming into town. It puts you about 10 feet into the roadway before you can actually see the oncoming traffic. So it's, it's a dangerous intersection overall. This, by I guess accident of putting in the granite, the sidewalk and the granite curbing and minimizing the width of the road, so it restricts the distance we would need for two lanes is a total benefit for the safety of the motorists and the line of sight.
So people coming out from Grove onto Washington can take both a right or a left?
Yes, absolutely. Yep. They, that would be the only option because we're making it one-way on each side. So they would come out on the lower half of the right side of the island, a good line of sight. They could go right or left. And it actually puts the people on Washington Street taking a left onto Grove at the higher side and actually gives them a better line of sight and actually makes it safer for them to take a left-hand turn with seeing oncoming traffic as well. So it actually overall enhances the safety of that area.
Do you, it's obviously going to take some signage. Do you see any problem with developing the signage so that people understand what's going on?
No, the only thing is not sure of the cost. We know that the signs are going to be about $60 per sign, probably be two on each side. That we would, you know, maybe look to enhance something, a larger scale initially for the, because we're going to have the, you know, the newness of it, which is always going to be a concern.
I, I wasn't concerned at all about the price. I was just wondering if you could, if you can do an adequate decent job of signage on both ends of that spur of Grove Street.
I believe we can. Would have to really take a look at it. I think the biggest one is going to be the left-hand, getting people comfortable with the left-hand turn from Washington onto Grove, more so than the, you know, the one-way going up.
Chief or Gary, is there some kind of a communication plan to let people know about this? So they're not just stumbling across it when they attempt to go in for the first time?
I'd probably refer to the town administrator, but we did have a meeting with the residents yesterday. There was no real objections to this, but I'd refer to the town administrator for the communications.
Thank you, Chief. I would just, I'd comment, yeah, so we did have a meeting yesterday and it was lightly attended, but it was still a very productive conversation. I think the neighbors who it affects the most were actually present, at least one of the two, the one that's right on the corner on Grove at Washington. We walked them through what it would look like. You know, one of the things that we're going to emphasize is we'll certainly try to continue the communication on what the changes will look like. It's, it's somewhat difficult. I mean, we had the Zoom call. We've, we've put flyers in everyone's mailboxes. And I think a lot of times people sometimes pick their heads up once something's completed and they say, oh wait, what's that? But we're going to do our best to try to get ahead of that so that people know what's happening. And obviously the abutting neighbors are the ones that are most drastically affected by this. So those are the people we'll continue to try to make contact with.
How about the rest of the town? Because a number of people travel there who don't live on that road.
It's notification. I wouldn't necessarily think it's appropriate for a Swift 911 call, for example. But I think that putting it up on the website, we can, I don't know in the past if there's, when changes like this, you know, Pine Street, for example, is one where we made some changes on turning that into a one-way. And, you know, trying to make sure that the people who might, it might impact are aware of it, but it's-
Maybe an article in the Tri-Town, or it's not the Tri-Town anymore. But just to talk about the change with the sidewalk going down and the change in the one-ways.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I actually had a conversation with one of the waters yesterday on it. And she's probably going to write a story. And I did emphasize the fact that we were having the meeting and the one-ways were going to change. I don't know if she's going to, how much she's going to put into the story about that. I hope she would. I did emphasize that it's going to be impactful and I'm sure people want to know. But I did get the impression she was going to write a story on it, so I blanked on that. I apologize, but that, that is a step that we also took.
And can we also use the traffic signboard that we have perhaps two weeks before to begin telling people that that particular intersection will be one-way only? We put it in one direction for, for the first week and the other direction for the other weeks, so people coming in both directions begin to learn it.
Absolutely. I was going to recommend that we put out at least a police signboard. And whether we, the one, the new ones from the Highway Department have arrived yet, we could utilize them or we could borrow one from NERAC so we can do appropriate notification through the signboard in that area. I absolutely agree with you.
I've got a question and it's, I'm sorry, Kevin.
I was going to say, great idea. That's-
I, I've got a question about the sidewalk. I'm visualizing walking from Town Hall down Washington Street and coming to the Grove Street spur, that I call spur, that's going to be one-way. And that, as I, I looked at the map and I couldn't quite figure out what was going on. That sidewalk is going to go around that corner to some extent down Grove Street. How far, how far down Grove Street does that sidewalk go?
Goes all the way down to Main Street and then it connects with Main Street all the way through downtown.
So there's a sidewalk there now, is there not?
Yeah, there is. It's an asphalt sidewalk right after the, the corner house there of Grove and Washington Street. It would, it would, we would have the new, new sidewalk would blend in for connectivity to the existing asphalt sidewalk that goes all the way by the playground, the tennis courts.
Yeah, got it.
Down to a Main Street.
And then the granite curb goes all the way to Main Street?
No, it does not.
Pardon me, what?
No, the granite curb only goes as far as the last driveway. I think it's 49, which is the DiMario's, where the direct of butter there on the corner. That curb will go just prior to theirs. That's where the granite will stop and it just goes to hot mix asphalt for the remainder of the way.
Okay. I, I also thought that was kind of confusing on the map. I couldn't quite figure it out. That answers my question and it's not terribly substantive, but I just wanted to know what was going to happen.
Good question. So the, the vote for Monday will be to incorporate the, the one-ways moving forward. Chief and Gary Blew will be on the line on Monday as well. So if there's any questions that any of you folks might have between now and then, anything that comes up, please feel free to reach out or we can speak through it during the meeting on Monday. And we're continuing to have dialogue with the neighbors and we, like I said, we have not had any negative feedback on the design at this point, so.
When the police chief tells me that it's a better deal all the way around, it's pretty hard to argue with.
Hey, thank you, Kevin. Any more questions from anybody?
Not a question. If I could just add something to that, if I have a second. Resident had talked to me today. I had a concern about that area. There is a drainage swale that's existing and has been there for, God, since I was five years old. And that'll be, we're going to redirecting the sidewalk there and the granite curb is going to be the separation and safety concern for that. Now on that backside is the drainage swale. Now we are redirecting pedestrians, cyclists, if you will, closer to that drainage dis. So a concern was raised in regards to the backside there for safety concern for anybody going up that way that might step off there. I did quick assessment. I reached out to our engineers for the job and Phalen, the contractor, for 75 feet roughly of split rail fence to come up and around to cover the deepest portion there would be a change order of roughly $2,750 to add that in.
Good, thank you.
And is that still underneath our grant total, Gary?
Uh, yes, it is. The, the only thing, the $60,000, I think we are, $62,000 that this bid came in under, we're hoping that covers in, and all of it actually, of the outbound lane from Parsonage out to Col Rain to redo that side with granite and mix and, excuse me, sidewalk as well. And in that same breath, we'd love to have this fence put up as well along there for a safety precaution.
For the record, could I perhaps share that drawing once that everybody, this, this is a aerial view of the drawing of what we're doing? Is that right on the screen?
Sure.
Let me try. We'll see if it works.
Hope you have better luck than I do, Mr. Gant.
No, I guess I didn't have this good-
There's the photo.
It's there.
Oh, you have it?
There's the photo.
Yes.
Okay. So that's, that shows what, what we have as a, as a drawing. Again, it's in red here. It is indicated as replacing, but this curve here is the area that we're talking about. And I guess, Gary, you were talking about putting in some type of a fence on this side of it because there's somewhat of a drop-off there. And then this is the additional curbing keeps going, but up to Town Hall, just to that split, and that's when it ends.
That's correct.
So Gary, you can see that photo?
No, you can't see the photo.
I can't see. Yeah, I actually can. I'm on my phone, but I can't see it. I'm very familiar with it now.
The split rail fence is going to go on, on the off-street side of the curb?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. I got you. Okay.
Great, thank you. Any, anything else from anyone on this?
And the red is existing curbing, true?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to stop the share.
Thanks, Dave.
One, no, one more question, Dick. Just to clarify again for me, the sidewalk will actually come around that corner and join the sidewalk that is already there? True?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, got it.
That's, that's the Complete Streets concept, is to be able to join that sidewalk, and that's what it's supposed to do.
Okay, cool. Yep, got it.
Great, thank you. Anything else on that, Kevin?
Um, just, I appreciate the work, the funding from the state and the support locally.
Great. And, and thank you, Gary, and thank you, Chief. Your work on this. This will start up the week of August 3rd. Is that when it's planned?
It is looking more and more like that now, Lynn, yes.
Okay. And everything to be done by September? I think that's when the grant expires?
That is correct. This money, yeah, that has to be spent. This project wrapped up no later than September 30th.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, we'll move on to our next item. A presentation on the ambulance services by the Fire Department. So joining us today is Chief Jen Collins-Brown. And Kevin, I don't know if you want to open this, and you and Jen are doing it together, but I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you. So I'm going to, I'm going to cross my fingers and try to share it once again. Bear with me.
Okay, now we really get to know your passcode.
I will be changing my password following. I feel like it follows the same password methodology of all of them, so.
Don't share that, Marshall, or I'm going to have to change mine.
Probably not a lot of variation, Marshall. You're probably right.
All right, here it goes. Comes up. Are you folks able to see the PowerPoint?
Yes.
Yep.
All right. So the PowerPoint I, design I used apparently does not transpose well. So that title page there says Topsfield Ambulance Service. Presentation by the Town Administrator Kevin Artuny and the Fire Chief Jennifer Collins-Brown, presented to the Topsfield Select Board and presented on today, July 23, 2020. What we're hoping to do with this today was when I came on as a Town Administrator seven months ago, one of the things I, I tried to learn as much as I possibly could about was our ambulance service. It was something different that I hadn't experienced in my previous work, but something that's very critical to the community here in Topsfield. And it's, it's evolved significantly over the years since the 70s until today. And with everything sort of moving with the COVID more recently and how we've operated more recently. And the more I've learned, I thought it would be really helpful and speaking with Select Board members as well, I thought it would be helpful just to do sort of an overview of our ambulance service in Topsfield as of, as the historical component of it, where we are today and what the potential could look like as well. So that's sort of the intent for today. I'm going to turn this over to Chief to provide the historical context as well as our current operations. And then she'll pass it back to me and I'll talk a little bit about the financial analysis that we ran and talk about some of the, what other communities are doing, like size and other, and then sort of summarize everything at the end. So Chief, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'll control the slides, but I'll let you start with the historical information.
Yeah, sure. Thank you. I, I just want to say I appreciate everybody's time today. And this is a super complex issue, so if I breeze through it because I live it and sometimes it's just, it's clear to me what's happening, but sometimes it's not clear about what's happening. But we did want to just kind of update you as to where we're at, and by updating you as to where we are at is talking about the history. And so it used to be in Topsfield that the police, they had one of those old pickup, not pickup trucks, station wagons, and they would scoop up people and take them to the hospital. In 1973, the Department of Transportation told the police that they can't, couldn't do that anymore. So historically, that's what Topsfield Police did. And then in 1975, the emergency medical services assigned to the Fire Department by the Board of Selectmen. And so historically, where it's a tier, it's been a tiered response in Topsfield where the police, fire and ambulance were dispatched to the calls. For a long, long time, the ambulance was out of Dambres, the center of Dambres. It was owned by Kevin Lyons, Lyons Ambulance, that's since been bought out by a bigger company. And we would provide the initial care, the, the first response care from the Topsfield Police Officers and then the other, other care by Topsfield Fire Department. And then the people would go in the private vendor's ambulance. Therefore, the private, and the private vendor would take them to the hospital. So I know that Kevin kind of outlined that, that there's providers of service and then there's transporters of service. So essentially the transporter is the, the wheels, the ambulance. And so for a long, long time, we would be the primary provider of the care. And then we would either hand them off to the ambulance service or we would go with the ambulance service if they didn't have the appropriate level of care or they didn't have the right equipment. And those are kind of, that's kind of been the way we've worked. So in the early 2000s, there was legislation called EMS 2000. And it asked each community to, to, it's kind of funny because I'm laughing because we finally got it done in 2009. It took us a long time. But it asked each community to outline how emergency medical services were done in their town. So we did that and that was a document. We brought all the stakeholders together. And that, and that, at that time, there were doctors' offices in town. We brought school nurses in. We brought environmental police. We brought all the people, the people that would, the nursing home was here. We were, the people that, that provided services and also used our services. So we outlined response times. So we had markers for what the police response time, the fire response time, and the private ambulance, the transporting ambulance response times would be. And so, um, that's kind of how we, how we've done it. We, uh, the town went out to bid several years ago, so I'll say roughly the town would pay between thirty and fifty thousand dollars for Lyons as it incrementally increased over the years. Um, the town did end up going out to bid. Um, and, and through that bidding process, they switched to Northeast Regional Ambulance. Um, and at that point, there was no cost, and I think we were up to like fifty-five thousand dollars for annually for ambulance coverage. Um, so at that time, that, um, we didn't have to pay for the ambulance. So that's kind of a circle, the trend that it happens in my lifetime. Um, that, you know, they have contracts build up with cost, and then somebody starts zero bidding contracts and the kind of cycle continues. So Northeast has been a great partner with us. They have been, we have been providing the primary care of the patients, and they have been primary, pri, providing the primary transport, and they're designated as such in our service zone plan. So they, um, transport, um, they don't have a dedicated truck to Topsfield. They transport, um, uh, patients as needed, and, uh, they get revenue from that transport based on the patient and the provider. A lot of times, um, we'll go with Northeast Regional Ambulance in their truck because of the, um, that they may not have the paramedic versus an EMT. There's all kinds of ways that, um, that might happen. But, but I think the good thing is we all work so well together. Nobody would know the difference. And so, uh, we've been continuing, um, we've, we provide all the fire and EMS services. We've been continuing to do that. Along the way, um, I know that a group of people made, um, a citizen's petition to ask for a study of the fire department. And, um, that citizen's petition, um, the way that that was handled was the Board of Selectmen convened a, uh, group of citizens to study the fire department. We were asking actually for a, um, professional company to come in and do it. There's been two other studies of the fire department done in the early two thousands. And, um, we know that we're understaffed, and we're kind of looking for some data to support that and also how we deliver services. Um, and so the, um, the study, that study, the studies in two thousand and four recommended that we run an ambulance service and actually developed a business, business model. The, the study, um, the other, the most recent committee, um, had a lot of information. And, um, I'm sure probably, uh, everybody remembers their, um, their report and their recommendation. Their recommendation, um, was, the first one was to eliminate the strong chief, so that was brought up to town meeting, and that was voted down. Um, their second, um, recommendation was to amend our current service zone plan, which we totally agree with. Um, and theirs was, their, um, their, um, recommendation was to house a private ambulance service in town and list that as the designated primary response. Mr. Caponegro, who owns Northeast Regional Ambulance, it's really clear that to get a dedicated ambulance in town, um, dedicated to the town of Topsfield would be at least a half a million dollar a year proposition. And, um, and we also philosophically didn't think it was a good idea to have a vendor in charge of, because the designated primary ambulance service, um, it means, it means that you're in charge of the oversight of the, the quality assurance and all those kind of things. So we thought that we, we should be the ones monitoring that. So we didn't agree with that, but we do definitely agree that our service zone plan needs to be updated. Um, the other, their other suggestion was to house a, uh, private ambulance in our fire station. And, um, I know that, I can't speak for Chief Jovanace or Chief Harris, who was our interim fire chief, but none of us, um, felt like, uh, taking away a Topsfield, ti, town of Topsfield vehicle um, and, and, and basically housing a private ambulance and the amenities that come with those, the housing, the people and the utilities. Um, why, we didn't agree with subsidizing a private for-profit business. That was, um, at the, at the, um, losing space in our tight, tight station for our vehicles. Um, the committee recommended that we modify the call model so that we didn't just use call people, but we scheduled shifts, which we, uh, had been trying to do that for years. And so we totally agree with that. They recommended modifying training. Again, same thing the chief had been recommending for years. Um, they recommended an outside extensive search for a fire chief, which the town did. They recommended an assessment center for the fire chief, which the town did. They recommended to upgrade the town, the job description, and they, so that was done, and they recommended to establish a transition team. So members of that committee would help, um, the new chief. And so needless to say, we didn't need to do that. But, so that was, um, that was that, that was the last, uh, most recent study of the fire department. Um, so we have been so lucky in looking at our current operations that, um, that we have had the support of the town, and we, that is clear.
But I just ask you back on that first, um, slide. This is a basic question, but what is a service zone plan?
The service zone plan, um, that was, um, that is a, a document which outlines how emergency medical services are, um, provided in a town. So in this, this legislation in two, two thousand, um, I'm glad you asked that, in two thousand, asked each town had to identify how it happens in their town. And so you had standards to hold people to for, um, for, um, uh, for accountability. And we, um, you know, it's kind of, it's one of those things, it is our, it's a require, it's, it's recommended, strongly recommended. Most community, most communities now in the, in Massachusetts do have one. It took a long time. Took the town of Topsfield to, until two thousand and nine to get ours, um, um, gone through the process through the Board of Selectmen and through the Department of Public Health. Um, and we, um, so we did that. Then we revised it, um, several years later when we changed our vendor from Lyons Ambulance to Northeast Regional Ambulance. And so, um, it's, it's a document, you know, the point of the document was to be able to hold people to standards. Um, we had always had issues with, um, Lyons Ambulance and the way Lyons Ambulance provided service to the residents of Mascanomit Nursing Home because, uh, we believe that the residents of Mascanomit Nursing Home should be, uh, given and, um, be able to have the same level of service that everyone in the town of Topsfield has. And so, uh, we don't, didn't agree with the way that, um, Lyons Ambulance handled that situation. And we really didn't have much luck going through the process with the Department of, of Public Health. Um, they obviously, they have much bigger things to, um, talk about. So the, oh, the other thing, um, in the historical, I was just looking at that, sorry, uh, under the service zone plan was a standard operating guideline. So that, um, we talked about it in the last committee meeting, and, um, that was a guideline to make it. So a lot of, um, emergency services operate on guidelines, not policies. So it gives people leeway when they're in an emergency, which is really unpredictable. And, um, so it's a guideline for when would we transport the patient? So when would Topsfield fire? So there was clarity for, um, Northeast, so we're trying not to waste resources, but do the best we could for the patient. And those, um, those situations where if, if somebody walked into the station having a medical emergency, we would take them to the hospital. We wouldn't wait the twelve to fifteen minutes for Northeast to come. If they're, um, if they, if the patient needed paramedic care and we had paramedics available and Northeast didn't, we would take the patient. So we had, we developed that policy as well for, just for clarity for, um, for everyone. So, um, decisions didn't have to be made on the, um, it, to lessen the stress of the staff and just to be clear about what was happening, and like I said, not to waste resources. So, um, we have had tremendous, we have had tremendous, tremendous support through the years from the town of Topsfield residents. And, um, in, um, this last year, we've responded to over twelve hundred emergency calls. We have, uh, for some reason, our love, uh, call volume has really increased. And, um, so currently, our staffing model is, um,
I'm sorry, um, guys, if you're not speaking, if you don't mind muting, we can hear something in the background. Thank you.
Currently, we have four full-time staff and then myself. The four full-timers, uh, they work two day, they work four days on, four days off. They're paired up, and they work six AM to six PM. And now we're able to have, um, through the support of the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee. So I can't tell you how grateful we are, especially this year, um, to be able to give the funding that we're able to offer, um, this, those shifts at night for staff. So we tried other models of covering at night. Um, they, that wasn't successful, um, but this has been really successful. Um, so we have, in general, we have twenty-four seven, um, coverage for the fire department. And that's really important for a lot of reasons. Fire grows quickly in modern homes. They have, um, they're made of composite materials. We have a lot of issues with all hazards, uh, carbon monoxide and that kind of stuff. So we have a lot, um, a lot of things that we do are really time sensitive. And this last fiscal year, by getting the sixty-two thousand dollars put into our operating budget, that kind of ensures that we have the availability to, um, offer those shifts. Um, so in, on, um, on, um, July, um, uh, July of two thousand and nine, I had come to the Board of Selectmen, and we had, we were upgrading, uh, we were updating our memorandum of agreement for nighttime coverage. But well, also, one of the things I let people, the Board of Selectmen know at that time was that our level of transports was increasing. And that was kind of as, um, a function of that we were having more calls, that the system was busier, and that we had, um, following, still following our, the SOG that we had established, that we were seeing an increase in calls. And all along the way, we've been working with Northeast Regional Ambulance to ensure that we're all together. We, um, we all have the same goals, and they agree with, you know, that they want the patient to be treated in the quickest way possible, the most appropriate way possible. Um, so, I'm sorry, so, um, since COVID, um, we've seen a fifteen percent increase in emergency calls, and, uh, it's all over the, I, I can't try to trend it. I don't understand really what happened. Um, they're COVID-related. You know that we had a lot of COVID. We had a lot of COVID deaths in town. Um, but they're also not. People were home. They were on, um, you know, furlough or whatever from their work. So they were doing things that they typically wouldn't do. We had some people get very badly hurt. We had people trying to cook things that they wouldn't usually do. So our, for some reason, our activity level was quite high. Um, I also made a decision in that, um, in speaking with Kevin as well in, uh, March, that if, um, we were gonna accurately respond to this, that we needed to ramp up our coverage. And we started staffing our station twenty-four hours a day as a result of increasing calls for COVID. So pretty much since, um, March twentieth, we've been doing, um, we've had someone in the station all the time. Um, and, and essentially since that time, we have been operating as the primary transporting ambulance as well. So that we are taking care of the patient, taking them from their house to the hospital and, um, providing all the services they need. Again, in partnership with Northeast Regional Ambulance, they were here yesterday helping us. Uh, yesterday, we had two patients ill in one house and a fire on the rooftop of the nursing home. So there's just no way that the two firefighters on duty and the four people that came back on call could handle that. So we had to have resources come in, and they're always, they're, uh, you know, they're happy to be a backup. But we have made sort of a transition that right now they're being more in a backup role. Um, operationally, we're, we're still looking at the four minutes and fifty-nine seconds. Ninety percent of the time, that's our mark from the service zone plan. Um, and, um, one of the things that, like, we talk, we talk about staffing the station. What happens when those people go to Beverly Hospital? And the people, there's no people in the station. And so what we've been doing, we have a program where when they go to the hospital, I keep two people back in the station and send everyone else home. So that is, is trying to save, uh, keep two people in the station, but save money. Because if you remember, we right now don't have the ability to limit people coming back on call. So there could be a time where we would have six or seven people, then that wouldn't be necessary. So we have a policy where we send the rest of the people home and keep the two people, two people in the station. And so that's worked out really well. Um, staff is, our staff has stepped up. I cannot tell you how proud I am of them. They've stepped up. This is a, I think this is a, a switch, a really lovely switch in service. It's a, it's good for our community. It's good for our patients. It's good for the system. And, um, and, um, you know, we've kind of seen that incrementally, but we've really seen a jump of it in it since COVID.
Jen, question for you. Um, how does this, um, expected response time, four minutes, fifty-nine seconds, uh, tie into the previous slide? There was a, I think, a fifteen or thirteen minute response time?
Yes. So there's three categories. Um, you can, I don't remember what the police, so it's a tiered response, right? So in general, the way the service zone plan is set up is the police have a response time, the fire department, and then the transporting ambulance. So, so it's that thirteen fifty-nine was for the transporting ambulance. And so this is the, this is our time. It's the, um, so it's, you know, and, and so I know, like, everybody uses cardiac arrest as a, um, as like the, the gold standard of response times. But there's, and, and it is, there's no doubt about that. But there's also a lot of other, um, medical conditions and trauma conditions, which time matters. And, um, and so that's, um, that's the other thing that came up in this, which I think, oh, it's in the lower, in the, um, the, um, in the slide, is that with our regional, um, communication center, we were the, we were, we were the different ones. Everybody else was doing their, um, their fire department was doing their transport. So it came up, uh, when we were, we were trying to do uniform policies because the, um, the, the regional communication center was having a really difficult time with, that's one of the challenges of region is bringing the five communities into one policy. And they were trying to have, we would always be the outlier. So when it really came up was this, um, last year, we were trying to, we started really small. We thought with the, um, all the police departments in the rec and the fire departments in the rec, we tried to come up with some, um, dispatch policies for psychiatric emergencies, for our house lockouts and for vehicle lockouts. We thought we'd start small. And we were outliers. We didn't, you know, the dispatcher would have to do something, the same thing for all the other communities, but always Topsfield would do something different. So in that, it, at, when that happened, we started to, to move a little bit more towards being like our regional partners. And so, um, that way the dispatchers don't have to continue to go back and forth, you know, through screens and figure out, oh, been at Topsfield, they do it this way. That's really not this, that's not the standard. And looking forward to communities that are gonna join the rec, they'll be, they'll be asked to do it the same way that we all do it too. So that, um, definitely helped operations and helped with our, um, our, re, our, we, our, they, it's not that the rec was having a difficult time, but it really made it more, it much easier for them to be consistent, because that was coming up as a problem. Um, when, uh, so when the ambulance leaves town with the people that are on duty, the, uh, it, the coverage is provided by either call firefighters or full-time firefighters, depending on who comes back on the call. Um, it's great experience for our firefighters. They get to see the patient, um, through the process to the emergency room. And then, um, um, by far, one thing that we've seen, and I, I know Catherine Gabriel couldn't be here today, but she brought up, um, in the budgeting process this year, that our, um, revenues have really jumped. And that's, that's a factor of us transporting more, and then the, the factor increased, um, the increased number of calls, also a factor of that. So it.
I'm sorry, one other question. It looks like the other communities, as you said, are, are, have gone to the primary transport being within the town. What was the issue whereby all of the towns were leaving, having like Northeast Regional as the primary or, or whoever? What was the issue as to why the towns decided we're gonna start to take that in and be the primary transport?
Um, I, I, I can't say for sure. So, um, like Essex has been doing it forever. Um, Amesbury Fire has been doing it. Middleton's been doing it forever. For Wyndham, I certainly can't speak to Wyndham, but, um, it definitely was the finances of it. Um, the, the revenue is a factor in offsetting costs. And, um, you know, to, I, I think there's something to be said to be in control of your own, um, program and not relying on vendors. And, um, so for me, that's what I hear is the, um, Georgetown did it, like Georgetown, I mean, that, I had participated with the Georgetown Board of Selectmen when they switched over to a transporting ambulance. And actually, that was one of their things, was they were worried about decreasing their revenue to Byfield, because Byfield provided their, um, emergency services. So, um, I, I do think revenue is a factor, but it's really about patient care and seamless care and doing the right thing. So, um, do I, do I think they necessarily wanted to leave a private vendor? I don't. I think it's this, a bigger system, system program matter as well as quality of patient care.
Okay, thank you.
And then, um, so the next slide is Catherine made a historical just for, um, our purposes here, uh, of the revenues. And so those, so we're, um, by Medicare rules, we, if we, um, drive, the wheels bill. So the person whose ambulance is doing, is carrying the patient is the one that has to bill. So some of our, um, sometimes we go into Northeast Regional Ambulance's ambulance with a paramedic because they don't have a paramedic available, and in that case, they would bill, and then they, they would give us a balance of the bill. They would keep part of the money, and then they would give us the rest of it. Um, if we, um, if we were called to Middleton, if we were called to Georgetown, if we were called to Dambres, we, we would transport the patient and we would receive the bill for that. So, um, that's the, that's the money that comes in. That money all goes to the general fund. And, um, that's, um, we have, Catherine and Kevin have, um, because one thing that we need to talk about, no matter what, is, um, an ambulance billing policy. So what happens with people who can't pay? Um, how long do we let, I know from an accounting point of view, and the auditor is looking for information. Um, how long do we let, I know from an accounting point of view, and auditor is looking for information on that. So that's another, that's actually another thing we should put on our action plan, but, um, to look at, uh, a policy that we have, so that we have that in place.
Jen, uh, you may be getting to this in a later slide, um, but relative to revenue, where do you see that number potentially going? Are you already, let's just say, doing eighty percent of the transports? So you expect, you know, maybe a twenty percent boost, or are you only at fifty percent? Or are you at the top already? That's about what you can do, other than just cost of living increases to the, the fees that get charged?
No, we're probably at, um, at, for that, this point of view, we're probably, I would say conservatively, at sixty percent of, um, the revenue. So, there's probably another forty percent. Um, you know, again, I think that's a really nice benefit, it's not my, my focus is on the patient care and the staffing, because that's important, is to have the staffing, that's the most important to me, is safety and staffing here. But I think that's a nice, um, added benefit to it, um.
If you were to do that additional forty percent, could you do that with the manpower that you have right now? Or would that require additional man, uh, resources?
Well, I think that we're, um, we have an opening right now, one of our firefighters left to go back to his hometown, and so we have an opening there. So right now, we're stressed, I would say, because we're trying to cover that full-time opening, plus everybody's going on vacation and things like that. Um, I need to develop a little bit more robust call department in, um, in, and there, I know that they're, they're, you guys are going to talk about their contract at some point, but they're, they're shifting, it's, the whole country is shifting, but to more of, like they described in the last study, shift work, and they, they started to try to call themselves Pretium, but I, I don't think, Pretium doesn't instill like a team to me. But they're working shifts, so there are more, um, there, there, um, people like it, they're scheduled more. But so I, but I do think I have to target people that, especially for some reason, Sunday night seems unattractive to people. Um, and so, um, I think that, you know, if we had all of our full-time staff and we had, and we had the call firefighters that were, if they're all active, I have a one that's out injured and stuff like that, um, you know, the, the problem is then is going to be filling the call shift. So I think that, that it's, like, I don't want to say it's all great, because the reality is, we, what we really need is people here that are, that are, um, trained. Um, and that's their, their full-time focus, so they understand code enforcement and things like that. But, um, I'm, I can't tell you that we don't need help, we need help. But, um, in, to this end, through the regional communication center and our mutual aid partners, we have, um, it's already set up, um, mutual aid, so it, depending on the location in town, if we weren't available, or our first call goes to Northeast, if they're not available, then Middleton would come or Wyndham would come. So we have mutual aid agreements in place and plans in place already with our dispatch, uh, because certainly, we can't do it alone, no, none of, none of these towns can do it alone. So, um, the, um, the next slide talks about fiscal year twenty revenues, and that's, that's where you see that three hundred and seven thousand, two hundred and two. And, um, so that's a much bigger increase from nineteen. You know, some, there is some ebb and flow, you know, one, one time, we got a, a check, it was a good check, but it was actually meant for, um, uh, it was meant for a guard rail, you know, so when you get into the dynamics of, um, crashes and people's reimbursement, that check should have gone to the, um, somebody, whoever's fixing the guard rail and things like that. But, um, in it, in general, um, the, the, um, also the receipts lag behind, because, um, I don't know if people have had the, the, where you've had to negotiate with your, your, your own insurance company, or fight your own insurance company for what's your right. Um, so, you know, the, the money will continue to get fiscal year twenty money in for quite a while now, based on some of those things. Um, and, um, so we just kind of broke down, Kevin did this, the last three, the first three months of twenty. And, um, it's just hard, because like I said, that, the, um, money really lags behind the transport. Some, some of the, um, um, some of the receipts from the transports come really quick, but some of it come, it takes a long time, especially if it's, um, um, involving appropriate case and things like that. So, we kind of just broke down some of the expenses. Um, and as best we could, you know, the, um, fuel is not in my budgets, and it's in the highway department budget. Um, and so we were kind of trying to look at historical data and, um, and kind of projecting how much the cost is. The, um, for me, the actual cost of the station coverage, the personnel is correct, because I went through every, um, every call, and I, I mathed out who did, who was there and how much they cost, so that's correct. Um, the other, the other calculations of costs are, um, worked through with the numbers that we have to the best of our ability. And you remember, um, a couple of years ago, when our A2, which is our backup ambulance, was, um, declared unsafe by three different, um, three different mechanics, and it was on the capital plan to be replaced, I think for two hundred and thirty thousand. But I really, I really, I'm a taxpayer here, I'm, uh, I try to think outside the box, and I really felt like, um, for a backup ambulance, that we might be able to get by with a, um, restored ambulance from another community. So we did buy the West Boylston Fire, uh, ambulance for, um, nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars. So, you know, I, I, I get the, um, the tech, this, the, the cost of the, the vehicles themselves, and I, you know, I think we've really done a good job to try to minimize the costs. One of the, um, things that you guys did with, um, negotiations is that we have a person, we, we call them facilities, but it's like a maintenance, uh, stipend that one of the call people gets, and he's able to do some of the maintenance here himself on the vehicles that are, um, that doesn't require expert, uh, maintenance, um, training, and so that helps to minimize some of the costs too. Um, but, so those are the, kind of the, you know, the costs versus the expenses to the best of our ability. In that personnel cost too, is, um, we, um, we pay Northeast Regional Ambulance three percent of the money that we receive for their billing, uh, which is a fantastic rate for billing, a billing company. And they, um, in general, do a very good job with that, it's very complicated, given the ins and outs of people's insurance. Um, but, um,
Is that just removed, Jen, from the gross transport revenues? Is the three percent out of there already?
No, I just added it to the, um, no, it's added, it's, we get billed every month, so I just add it, it's in the personnel expenses, uh, for this purpose. Um, but we have a line that's professional services. Um, I did, when we did that, we did speak with several billing companies, in fact, there's a, a medical billing company in Topsfield, but, uh, that's a fantastic rate to get, um, for, for our volume, um, which our volume seems busy to us, it is busy to us, but in the big scheme of ambulance companies, it's not that, it's not a lot. So usually, their, our rates are set on, their percentages are set on volume.
Um, Jen, a question if I may, um, is Northeast, uh, ambulance, uh, happy with doing that for us for three percent?
Um, I think they, uh, I think that they might, when you're, when the contract is up, they might, um, want a different rate. Um, I, I wouldn't want to speak for them, but, um, since our call volume has gone up, that means their, um, work has gone up in it. So, um, I, I, I bet they would probably look at a different rate. And, and for that, we did, I did, uh, touch base with a couple of other companies that do billing too, so, um, that's okay. I mean, it, it's good to shop around too, so.
What might that go to, Jen, if you compare it to other places?
What's that?
What might the three percent go to, if you were looking around, you said that's a great rate? What do others tend to do it for, if that rate gets increased?
Um, um, I think probably Chief Hovey could speak better to it, but, um, the lowest I got was four, which I was super excited about. I think it's more like seven or eight percent, and maybe higher. Um, so, um, it's certainly, i- in my opinion, worth it, because none of us are medical billing experts. It's incredibly complicated, so, um, uh, I'm grateful to, when people call here with questions about their bill, I'm grateful to divert them to Northeast Regional. Um, and then, the next page shows our communities, the communities around us that transport, um, primarily with their fire departments. Um, the other thing I was thinking of, the town of Rockport does transport as well there, it's not owned by the fire department, it's owned by their town, it's a separate division. Um, but where, this is, so now we are, we're in line with all the rec communities.
So in that bottom line, where it says future capital cost, could you just lift the screen a little bit, uh, so that we could see that last piece?
I think it got cut off, uh, by chair, I, I'll just speak to it. So, the future capital cost is a new ambulance in the future at some point. Um, the, the useful life of the, of the A1, which is the primary, which was purchased in two thousand and fifteen, um, we estimate ten years, uh, so we'll, we'll be coming up four, five, six years, um, on that. And then, on the, um, backup, it, it has a lot less run. Um, but we expect it, even though it's an older, it's a two thousand and eight vintage, we purchased it used last year, as, as Chief mentioned. We're estimating four or five, maybe six more years on that as well. The capital costs, if you assume a new, uh, ambulance has a ten-year shelf life, um, that's, we're estimating a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar cost associated with that. What we, what, what was done there was we broke out, um, what a three-month, uh, cost. If you take that ten-year span of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you take, you, you, divided by ten, you divide it by twelve, gives you a monthly cost of what, if you broke it into equal installments, for example, just to get a cost of what the, the capital cost is, to be able to put a cost to having that vehicle during a specific period of time, those three months. Um, and what, what it says is that the cost would be over a three-month period, six thousand, two hundred and forty-nine dollars. Um, where if you look at ambulance one, which that ambulance costs two hundred and eleven thousand dollars, that's a three-month cost of five thousand, two seventy-five. So you can see, it could, it could increase a thousand dollars, give or take, um, at that time when it's needed to purchase another ambulance. I'd also just,
Thank you.
Point out as well, on the twenty-four-seven coverage that was implemented in March due to the COVID and the number of calls, um, those are reimbursable through those, those overtime shifts through FEMA at seventy-five percent, and then, uh, the CARES Act will cover the additional twenty-five percent. Um, so being able to cover the station due to the COVID, which was the reason we had to move on that, um, will not be an additional cost to the town.
Is it just personnel, Kevin, or does it cover any of these other expenses that are listed here for ambulance service and the fact that it increased during COVID?
It's a great question, it's probably a hard sell to say that, um, they're, they're, the way that it's been described in the CARES is that capital funding is not something that they'll cover. So if we, say we were up for a new ambulance, um, they, very unlikely that they would pay for that, for example. Um, if we do incur, um, additional costs, you know, we might be able to, um, look at a fifteen percent call increase, but it's hard to say that specifically related to COVID, um, per se. We know it's gone up, but there's not really, it's not all COVID-related incidences that we're responding to, so. Um, it's not, um, it's not clear, I would say, that it's an easy one to look for reimbursement for. And if we did, it would be a, probably a small percentage of what those, those costs are. Um, outside of just the personnel ones that we know are real.
Okay, thank you. Because we also, um, so, in that, um, I don't want to get, I don't want to confuse things, but on the PPE, the, um, medical supplies, there's a good, there's a good, uh, there's a good, um, argument for those going through FEMA, and then the CARES, they definitely would. And we also received, uh, a little, a little over five thousand dollars from, um, adjudicated Medicare claims that was able to be applied to the personnel, so that was another, uh, reason why we were able to do that. Um, but there's definitely, and then we also received assistance of firefighter grant, and that was, um, actually probably paid for most of those medical, um, supplies. So, uh, we did, you know, you know that, we talk about it all the time, we're always looking for creative funding mechanisms. And, um, and, uh, so we'll continue to do that.
Kevin, reference to the CARES Act, at this point, how much money have we been requesting for this particular category? Meaning the personnel side?
Yep, that's a great question, so right now, we're submitting for FEMA, um, uh, first, and then once we have approval through the FEMA process, we'll be able to process, what we'll, we'll end up doing is reclassing the expenditures, um, journal entries from the operating budget of the fire department into the CARES fund that we set up when we receive the funds. So it'll just be, it's administrative move to, to be reimbursed, because the money's available to us, uh, at this time.
And how much is that? And how much is that?
Uh, Chief, do you have that number?
I, I just turned, I just turned around to look at that, I, I don't have that offhand. We would pay seventy-five percent, seventy-five percent will get, um, paid through FEMA, there's no question about that. And then, it would be the twenty-five percent of the overtime that would go through CARES.
So I, I have, um, full-time firefighter overtime was a total of, uh, through June first, was seven thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars. Five thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight, uh, was, was reimbursed, will be reimbursed through FEMA, and one thousand, eight hundred and twenty-nine will be reimbursed through the CARES. And then the call firefighter wages during that same, up through June one, that's reimbursable through, uh, FEMA and CARES, was a total of ten thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars, with a reimburse of, um, I think, uh, seven, the seventy-five, um,
They were, they're, they're not eligible for FEMA.
Sorry, yeah, fifty, it's almost a fifty-fifty type split there, with the reimbursable five thousand, eighty-two came from another different grant, right, Chief?
It came from the, uh, the Medicare money.
Right.
More detail than we need then, at this point.
Okay, yeah, very welcome.
Um, so the, just to stay, so we would like to continue, we're going to continue with this as a pilot. I think that Kevin, um, kind of summer, kind of, um, brought that up, and I think that's a really good, good way to look at it. Um, again, we've been meeting with, um, Northeast Regional Ambulances on a regular basis, and they're very supportive, they've always had been very supportive of us. Um, and so that we're going to continue to do this, and, uh, we'll make a decision, uh, you know, and the next time the ambulance contract comes up, as to whether this is going to work or not. One of the things that, if something changes with the staffing here, so if we should decrease in our staff here, or if we should not be able to fill staff, uh, fill like a Sunday night, like that's a problem sometimes, um, Northeast is going to, they're always, they're going to be our primary backup, so they're still, um, they're, they're still happy to come if they have an ambulance available. Um, so that, um, we, we know that we need to amend the contract with them to, uh, their purposes, kind of, um, to identify them as backup right now. And we also need to update our service zone plan, which we know that, and now, I also, we need to, uh, make sure that we get that billing, um, uh, standard guideline together, so that we have clarity about, um, if someone comes to us with a hardship, um, and they can document they have a hardship, there's all kinds of federal guidelines for how do you do that, and we just should just have that documented, so that we could do that, so that there's not, the emotions not in that, and, because these are our residents in general, and they are our friends and family, so we want to be as objective as possible.
Jen, say the, um, the pilot of the primary transport began.
Um, Mar- uh, March, with COVID, March twentieth.
Okay, that's the start of it, okay.
Yep.
Who, who authorized that as a pilot?
Uh, we, Kevin just used the word pilot, I think that's a good way to think of it, because we're not committing to doing it forever. We're committing to try it, try it and see how it works. Um, it's worked very well for, since March twentieth, but, um, we don't want to make a drastic shift in policy and operations without really studying it, making sure that we're, um, in line.
But who in the first place authorized us to go with a pilot like this? Is that you, Kevin?
No, it's, it's me, I'm the one that said we need help at night. We're in COVID, we're running twenty-four hours a day, seven days awake. If I don't say, in the middle of a pandemic, that we must staff twenty-four hours a day, then it would be irresponsible not to have done that, so.
The answer is, you chose to do this pilot, beginning on the twenty-ninth, and it coincided with the, the COVID provided some of the impetus for doing it, but it is your decision to do, that's, that's all I'm asking.
Yeah, it was, it wasn't,
You decided to do it, and who authorized it?
Yeah, it, um, it was, um, I, uh, we had, we knew that we had funding for it for a while. Um, and actually, um, Kevin can correct me if I'm wrong, but we're going to actually be able to, um, access FEMA money and CARES money moving forward for a while this year. So, well, it will cost the town even less money, uh, to do this. So, but there, it, we, it was necessary that we, in order to, for the safety of the people in our department, and the stress that they were under, and the, um, the responses that we had to do, it was necessary to have people all, all the time here. And, um, and that's what we did. If there was, if, if we didn't do it then, then it would be, I don't know how I could sit here and tell you we need to do twenty-four-hour day coverage, because that was, um, that was absolutely necessary.
Jen, was this driven by COVID, or was this something that you could see unfolding, and it just, it was exacerbated with the onset of COVID?
Oh, make no doubt about it, yes, we, we've, uh, we've been talking, you know, that we've been talking about this forever, that we need to do, um, we need to look at, you know, um, guaranteed responses in a timely manner, uh, to all hazards in the fire department, to have staffing here. And so, it definitely has been, um, something that we've talked about, Chief Harris has talked about, Chief Jovanacci, Chief Jovanacci before that talked about, that we need people here, we have been, um, We have been um not, by not having full-time staff and a guaranteed response, we have not served our members of the community well. And so we've known that, we've talked about that for decades. Uh, that COVID nineteen pushed everything over. So like everyone else, um, I had people that wouldn't come back here in general, every single one of these call firefighters came back. They didn't have to come back, they exposed themselves and their families to COVID and they still came. And um, and so um, you know, as, as far as cost effective ways to cover the station. This is um, without having full-time staff for twenty four seven, this is the uh, the best way to do it. And so it's a conversation that we've had for decades and decades and which was uh right over the cliff by COVID nineteen.
So. And a separate question, Jen, kind of segueing, so it says, continue the pilot until, and one of the conditions was if fire coverage is reduced less than twenty four seven. Um, could you explain that? I know we, we don't have as many fires, it seems to be more, more medical oriented, but what does that bullet mean?
Yeah, and um, and I think that what um, what um, what the word missing is fire department coverage. So if the fire department is not covered twenty four hours a day, seven days a week, so that's, it's not fire coverage necessarily, it's all of our staffing. So if you um, if, if our coverage of our department is reduced by twenty four seven, you gotta, you gotta get help from somewhere. So you're, if we don't have the firefighters to cover it, you're going to have to get help from other departments and other ambulance services. So if that happens, obviously, we wouldn't be the primary ambulance transporting because um that would, we couldn't guarantee a response. So we, we wouldn't want to put our staff or our patients in that position.
Okay, so if the calls ramped up such that you didn't have twenty four seven coverage in the fire station, then you'd have to relook at this approach, you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, if we, if we, if some reason like you guys, the finance committee that you guys come and say you gotta take, you know, four hundred thousand dollars out of your budget. And the town makes a decision that they're going to go elsewhere for, you know, privatize the police department, privatize the fire department, I don't know, whatever. But like you, there's got to be room for um, you know, doing the right thing and, and kind of reversing decisions that have been made, so.
Okay. Thanks.
Um, I, I, I'd like to add a couple of words to that. Um, uh Lynn, we've, we've, the, the fire department and uh, and we, over the years, have talked about the fact that we have had people, we had a fire station that sat empty for a good part of the day. And uh, and there are some of us that felt that that was almost irresponsible. Um, I take issue with a uh, a statement that Jen made a little while ago. She said, uh, we're not doing as good as you, we're not doing a good job of that. Well, in my opinion, that's not true. I think with the limited resources that she's had and the limited manpower that she's had, they've done a great job. And I think we behooves us to make sure that that support is still there. Uh, it bothers me no end that the money she raises goes in the general fund. And she has to come begging for uh budget dollars every year. Um, uh, I think there ought to be some way that she can use some of that revenue to get done what she needs to get done.
Just out of curiosity, why does it go back to the general fund?
That's an accounting, I was going to say Catherine unfortunately couldn't be here, but she could give us that. And she has had, she's actually had experience in other communities of doing this. And some communities, um, some communities give all of their receipts to the, back to the fire department for capital equipment and things like that. Some give a percentage, and I know that the auditor, the town's auditor was looking at more clarity in um how receipts are um documented. So she has changed that, but she, she would have um information on that.
Uh, the fact of the matter is, it makes sense for those funds to go back to the general fund in a sense. Because if, if you, if she, if Jen had that money at her disposal, it kind of uh, it kind of upsets the budgeting process. And uh, that's what the budgeting process is all about, in my opinion.
Yep.
And I would just like to add too, if I could, um, I've, I've learned a lot from Chief um from when I started seven months ago about how we're operating. Um, and I've had chance through the collective bargaining and other places to meet every one of the members, both the, the full-time and the call firefighters. Um, and the work they've done over the last few months um during the COVID crisis um has been heroic. It's um, I, I'm not just saying this is hyperbole, but I believe they've saved lives. Um, they do, that's what they do, um, but especially during time. Um, and so I just want to, I guess, to say a big thank you to the work that's, that's being done in the fire department with their EMS and paramedic work. Um, and also to Northeast Ambulance for the work they do. Because they've, they've always been there and they continue to be there supporting us in the relationship. Uh, and the meetings I've had with uh the ownership group of our uh ambulance provider. Um, it, it's a really good relationship and it's a good, they do a very good service um to our community and others. So um, just a big thank you to everybody for the work they're doing on that.
I have a, I have a question about the operation here and how it all came about. The point that was made is that our firefighters were stressed through the COVID period. Obviously, there were more things going on and you had to be more careful in that. Why did we not, or do, are we not now, if they're still being stressed? Taking advantage of our transport service to pick up more of the work instead of less of the work? In other words, spread it out, uh, did they refuse to do it or something?
No, um, uh, like exactly what I explained in July of nineteen happened, what happened to us happened to them as well. And so the system continues to be busier and busier. And so their um, their call volume increased tremendously as well. So um, the, we can all say, you could go for, go for a private vendor, but the private vendor could. Even if you look at um Atlantic Cataldo, which bought Lyons, they call us now because they can't cover their contracts. So um, they, it would have been, i- if you wanted to increase their response time, you could ask Northeast to come, it would take longer to come. But they also, they're in the same exact position as we are, with staff out sick, they have, and they have much more in volume of calls. It's harder to get an ambulance, so that's why you can't just get, you can't get blood from a stone, that's, there's, there's so much going on.
Thank you, Jen, thank you, Jen. It sounds like there was a fifteen percent increase in the volumes and that, and apparently they can't handle it. As a board, I think we have a responsibility, we do the contract with that ambulance company. I think we ought to bring them in and discuss with them why they can't up their service or whatever it is that they should be doing. This is their business, if they can't do it, they should get out of the business, so to speak. But this is our responsibility, we shouldn't be expecting Jen to pick up the load if they're not able to pick up the load. That's their job, and that's why we contract with them. So I think it's our responsibility to get that done. Uh, Kevin, can you make arrangements to have us uh have a work session with Caponegro? And uh, he, he has to come in prepared because we have to understand why he has been unable to service us as best as he should be servicing us.
But you also, um.
It's just for Kevin to do, that's all right.
Yeah, but you also don't have, um, he, he's not, he's doing the best that he can. And I, and I, and I really don't want to, um, he's doing the best he can, and he's not, that, we don't pay him anything. So he doesn't have to, he's not responsible, he's not required to provide us with an ambulance if he doesn't have one. And so the fact of the matter is that it's, the systems have gotten busier, like I said a year ago, they're even busier now. And, and it, with this unrest as well, it's difficult to find personnel. And so it's a matter of everything coming together. And, and um, I just, I want to make sure that he, it's not that he refused. Um, it's, it's that he's been supportive, he's supportive of good patient care, he does not want us to wait on scene. So he's supportive of the system that we're, we're trying to put in place to help everyone, and he's an integral part of it. So I just want to make sure that he's not, um, he's not, uh, he's not, he's doing the best that he can. We don't pay him anything, I don't, what more can you ask? You can't get, you don't get, you don't pay for services. So um, you know, it'd be, it'd be a totally different ballgame if the town in Topsfield paid him money. And he was supposed to dedicate a, an ambulance, but that's not, that's not the agreement we have, that's not the contract we have.
I'd also just mention too, I worked with um, with Northeast in Beverly, they were our ambulance service. So I, I've known Brian for uh quite some time. And um, he's built a pretty good company and he's, he's, he does it, uh, from what I can tell on balance over my entire experience, he's, he's, he's done a very good job. Um, you know, I think Chief's point, um, and it's, it's across the board for the police, the fire, ambulance services and others. Last few months have been unusual, um, but he's been really good at keeping communication up with us. Um, he emails Chief or I or both of us, um, not, on a very regular basis, more than I would have expected to be, to be frank. Um, and he's always willing to meet and talk with us and, and flush out issues as they come up. Um, and I think, I think Chief referred to him as part of the team, right? Um, as their Brian services, and I think that, um, I certainly think he's a team player in that sense. Um, just for what it's worth, my observations from an operational standpoint. Um, but I certainly can reach out to him and if, if the board's uh desires to, to, to talk with Brian, we certainly can have, uh, ask him to um be a part of a future meeting if it's so desired.
Thank you.
A couple of comments I'd, could, couple of comments I'd like to make. First of all, it's very difficult to put heat on somebody when you're buying something for nothing.
Right.
And second.
It's not for nothing, it's, it's for a contract, and if he doesn't want to be on the contract, then we ought to find out what's with the contract. We have another year to go and it's up to us to figure it out.
If we didn't use him at all, I can understand that, but we do use him. I have a, I also have a sneaky feeling that Neil Hovey might have something to say here too, and I don't want to, I don't want to put you on the spot, Neil. But uh, if you don't want to comment, that's fine, but uh, you've got some background in this game too, so.
Now, I, I sort of welcome the other comments, honestly, first and foremost, I want to applaud the fire chief for all of her initiatives and efforts. Uh, this is some of the most difficult times and what she has put together. In my twenty two years, I have never seen uh this system so impressive in all my years here. Uh, the personnel that she has attracted, her, the response times of her personnel, the patient care. And what the public is benefiting from all of her uh, uh, initiatives. And she's following the national models, our, our response times, well, police officers getting there, highly trained police officers within four minutes. Paramedic level service, EMT, EMT level service within four to six minutes, her holding the low standards, the transportation times. It, it truly shows how both, all teams are working together, the patient care, the outcomes. Um, and it's just phenomenal, and I also have to commend Northeast EMS. They are there when we call, they're there to back us up. Uh, their personnel are extremely professional as well when they show up as, as backing us up. So I think what the chief has done has been absolutely remarkable in some of the worst times. Um, the personnel and the care that is given and the, what you, what you guys have uh negotiated for a billing rate is phenomenal. You know, I would expect it to demand seven, nine, ten, eleven percent. To get three percent or four percent uh is absolutely incredible. And I, I ran, I owned my own EMS company for twelve years, I've been involved in EMS for thirty five years. And I sit back and I, I'm in awe about what the fire chief has done under these times and the people that she attracted and the benefits that this community has received from this. And I can't applaud her enough, and I can't applaud the efforts of the whole town and allowing her to uh, to operate the ambulance service as she has. And if the true model is fire, rescue and EMS. Uh, and uh, we're going down that path, and it's just, it should continue, it should not be a pilot program, it should be the standard. Because the people from Topsfield uh deserve that. Uh, and prior to that, we would sit on scene and wait fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, twenty minutes, waiting for ambulances. And again, in, in this short period of time, i- it's been incredible, and I would like to take the word out of pilot and encourage everybody to have this as the standard, because this is the uh gold star standard that our communities deserve. And I have a lot of experience in this, I, I used to compete against fire departments and say I could do it better. Uh, but that is not the case here uh at all. Uh, when you have something good, uh, you should not go looking for something else that actually, and it's a proven entity. Uh, we should not be exploring something when we already have the best.
I have had, I have recently, recently I have had a situation where I interface with a guy that is a full-time firefighter in North Andover. And he said to me the other day, out of the blue, he said, man, that fire chief in that department is awesome, you guys ought to be proud of that. Thanks, Jen.
Did he tell you I paid him?
They got a lot to work with out of that three hundred thousand now. Great, um, any other questions um for Chief or Kevin or Chief?
Uh, I would just ask if we're what, roughly four months, give or take into this, this pilot? Is there anything that has come up that you weren't expecting? Was there anything surprising or is it gone as, as you would have expected it to go?
Um, I have to tell you, um, and um, I am, the most surprising thing, which I'm horrified to tell you, is that how well my staff have done. Because this puts you, if you think about, you are um a teacher, a dental hygienist. Um, you are a uh water department employee and you now have to take care of people, interface with a doctor, interface on the radio, interface with nurses. I, I am the most surprised at, uh, which I, it's, I know it sounds negative, and it's not that I don't have faith in everyone. But uh, how well and how professionally they have done it, I, I, I didn't, I didn't know that, I'm just so glad of that. But otherwise, no, like Neil said, we've been doing this a long time, um, and it's a, it's um, I, you know, it's, it's good to help give back to the community, to give back the funds to the community. But it's really good to just take care of people in the right way.
If I could also add on to that, Mr. Hook, um, my surprise during this period is how I'd say gung ho everyone has been, the team. You know, we've had the collective bargaining sessions, and they make a point to say, this is what we want to be doing. Um, you know, they're not, they're not having issues or, or complaining, they're saying, you know, this, this is the right direction, this, this is good for us. Which, that to me, I'm grateful to hear that, but it's not always the case. Um, when you're making transitions, when you're doing things that, that's such high volume and as important as what's happening. So um, I know the question was directed to the chief, but I, my observation, my, when you said that was, I had the pitch in that that was my biggest surprise personally, is how um onboard everybody's been. And that's a credit to the chief for, for the leadership.
Absolutely, it starts from the top. It does, great job, Jen, that was uh very helpful in providing background and a, a summary of what's going on today. So it sounds like you feel comfortable that this is the model, I know you've been a couple of years moving towards this, trying to define the most cost effective way to approach this. Um, it looks like you're, you've kind of hit upon what you think is going to work, and this probably won't be just a pilot, this will be the way going forward?
Yeah, I think, uh, you know, we'll see how it goes, but I, I don't want to, um, you know, I want to be really wise, eyes wide open and make sure that we're doing the right thing. Um, you know, like I said too, um, that I know in watching um the finance committee meetings, when Catherine has to revise her numbers based on our revenue. So I do know it's helpful to the town, and especially in this time. Um, the bottom line is our staff, we're going on the calls anyway and doing the work, this way we can at least get the revenue from that work. Um, so it's, I think it's helpful in, in all ways, um, but we're sure are glad to do it, glad to help our friends and neighbors.
People have to understand in the billing, there is a significant lag time of anywhere from twenty one to six months. So what happens today, uh, you're not going to, you don't see the revenue, sometimes it's in a di- different fiscal year, that makes it very complex. And you know, Medicare pays based upon the revenues, the monies that they have, and sometimes they just deny claims to delay the uh payment, uh, payments to the communities. I mean, I went many, many months, nine, ten, eleven months before I received many payments. Uh, so it's a very complex uh program.
You, you telling me that insurance companies don't pay quickly? Come on. They're using, they're using their cash flow as much as you were trying to use it.
Oh, absolutely.
Not, they, don't you, don't you think they want your money though, fast?
Oh, sure, sure.
Don't miss a payment with them.
Great, well, thank you so much, that was uh really helpful. If there are no more questions on that, I think we're just moving to our last motion. Unless there's anything else anyone has that they'd like to raise?
Motion to adjourn.
Uh, second.
Okay, uh, roll call vote, Dick?
Aye.
Boyd?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
And Lynn, aye. All right, thank you, everyone, that was unanimous, uh, meeting adjourned.